And welcome to the Halloween version of Longview City Council.[76.64][76.64](laughter) But anyway, thank y'all for being here for the October 24th, 2013 Longview City Council Meeting. We'll start tonight with our prayer and pledge, which will be led by the Youth Ministry of Red Oak Baptist Church, under the direction of Brother Greg Jeffrey. The invocation will be given by Amber Thompson. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Macy Davis. Please stand.
Will everyone please bow their heads? Lord, we come to you today saying thank you for everything you've done and everything you're going to do. I pray that this meeting will be productive and everyone will leave with positive attitudes. Lord, I pray that you'll continue to bless me, my family, my church, and our community. As we part our ways, I pray you protect us from this, from the dangers in this world. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all. You want to introduce everybody that's here with y'all tonight?
Macy Davis.
Hi.
I'm Amber Thompson.
Hi, Amber.
Ashley Jeffrey.
Okay.
Julia Robertson.
Okay.
Kennedy Jeffrey.
Hi there.
Taylor Robertson.
Okay.
And Mariah Sanders.
All right. Thank y'all.[187.51][187.51](applause) Absolutely. Sure look good in that purple and gold.[195.12][195.12](laughter) Go Tigers. Except when it comes to Ole Miss. Um, okay. We might not play good, but we look good.[208.01][208.01](laughter) Okay, our first item of business tonight, Council, is the citizen comment, and I have one card tonight from Jimmy Aldridge.
Yes, I'm Jimmy Aldridge, living number five, Lindsay Lane in Longview. What I wanted to talk about is people coming into the backyard that are not identified. I tried this at the city council, at the town meeting last week. I've never gotten a response from anybody. The man never gave me the phone number like he was supposed to. I haven't been able to get in touch with anybody at Atmost anymore, and...
Excuse me one second.
Okay.
The man from Atmost is here tonight.
Well, I'd like to meet him.
I'd like to meet him too.
I would.
We will get y'all two together by the time the meeting's over with.
Okay, and also, what I'm really wanting to do is if the city council can do anything about making it illegal for them to go into your backyard without notifying somebody.
Okay, right behind you is a man from Atmost.
Is it the same man to...
He is, he is a director general, so, whatever the title is.
That's, that's what I wanted to do, is try to get it towards against the law, so that they have something to go by.
Okay. We'll ask the city attorney's office to look if there's, it would be in the form of some ordinance, I would assume.
Because I emailed Mr. Allen.
He's basically talking about identifying someone's cell before they come on to private property, in particular into people's gated backyards, et cetera. Okay. Yeah, Darwin can visit Ms. Aldridge tonight.
Just right behind you.
Right behind, with Atmost.
Yes, the big guy.
Thank you, Jimmy. Okay. Okay, the next item is a presentation item, which is a proclamation for Fire Prevention Month. Tonight, from the Longview Fire Department, we have Curtis Shaw and Aisha Robinson. Would y'all please come forward?
How y'all doing tonight?
Good.
Right, good, good. Let's see, fire detective. Oh, I've been seeing those pink colored fire trucks everywhere and whatnot today. Are y'all gonna paint them back to rock though? They stay like that year round?
They look good, don't they?
They sure do. They were pretty, I saw them up there at the Institute of Health and Living today.
Okay, so this is Fire Prevention Month Kitchen Safety, October 2013. City of Longview is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our state. Fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, in homes of the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. Cooking is a leading cause of home fires in the United States, where fire departments responded to more than 156,000 annually between '27 and 2011. Residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. Longview's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. So therefore, I, J. Dean, by the authority vested in me, as Mayor of the City of Longview, hereby proclaim October as Fire Prevention Month in Longview.[425.21][425.21](applause) Is there anything on the consent agenda that Council would like to consider separately?
Move to approve.
Okay, may I have a motion? Second in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Let's move to our zoning items. Public hearing, item A, to consider application Z1309. Mr. Michael Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. I believe zoning item A has been withdrawn by the applicant.
Oh, excuse me, item A has been withdrawn? Just got a note on that. Let's go to item B, PD1308.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. Members of Council, Mr. Willard, the applicant, Mr. Williams, is requesting to amend PD08-05 to remove certain notes related to the number of units with certain numbers of bedrooms and adjust some lot lines and HOA lines to make some larger units in there. As you can tell, this is, this area's excluded and this area's excluded. This is the development off of Eden between Garner. This is areas, the zoning map, it's adjacent to single-family. Future land use map, nothing's changing other than in the notes, there was a number listed as far as the number of three bedrooms versus two bedrooms, some oversight back in '08. So they're just removing that so they have more flexibility when they're building their units. P&amp;Z and staff do recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions, Mr. Shirley. If not, this item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. I have one speaker card from Mr. James Williams. I think he's here to answer any questions. If there's any questions for Mr. Williams, there not being any, is there anybody else that would like to speak to this matter? If not, the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item C, application PD1309.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. The applicant is requesting to rezone from single-family SF2 to planned development, single-family attached. This would allow for townhomes. As you can see from the site development plan, there would be units of five attached dwellings and four pods. It'd be a new street in. This is just directly south of the new J.L. Everhart campus there at Hollybrook. Part of the development process, they would only have the single tie-in, and they would, if everything after the Hollybrook extension and all is completed, if it would allow, they would install a sidewalk to connect into the sidewalk there at the school system. It would be, this is kind of a split-level design. It's gonna be kind of a two-story with a split level, so it's kind of a three-story This is the zoning map showing this area's single-family. The school is zoned to multifamily. There's some commercial on the opposite corner and the single-family. It is consistent with the future land use map, Planning and Zoning Commission, and staff do recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Council, okay, this item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. I do not have any speaker cards. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this matter? If not, the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion? Second in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item D, consider application PD13-10.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for Longview Regional. This is to amend their original PD12-11 to allow for a four-story medical office building instead of the approved three-story. No other changes to the site. It does just the orientation of the building from the original plan, but other than that, the parking and everything, they are able to meet those requirements, just allowing them to go an additional story. P&amp;Z and staff do recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? If not, this item requires a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. I have a speaker card from Ray Finch. Were you here to answer questions? Okay. Any questions to Mr. Finch? If not, is there anyone else here who'd like to speak to this matter? If not, the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item E, to consider application, let's see, no, excuse me, to consider a request to abandon 50-foot wide street right-of-way. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to abandon the street right-of-way that was platted as Lewis Street, consisting of approximately .291 acres located in the North Cut Heights addition between Harlem and Hudson. And there's three items on the agenda that are for this area, and I'll kind of describe what each one of them is, and then we can take separate action. The, and it's kind of hard to tell on this map, this is an aerial of the area. This is Carmella Davis's building. There is an alleyway that is platted that runs north and south that was never constructed. There is an alleyway that runs east and west in this area that was never constructed. And then this is the 50-foot street right-of-way that was never constructed. The applicant, Mark Page, he has assembled the majority of this property in this area with the intent to redevelop it into some sort of either two-family or multifamily type, to redevelop the area. He does own this, this property here. This is kind of a plat of the area, as you can see, the right-of-ways. And this is their plan for kind of a new layout. They're gonna kind of reconfigure the lots and combine them to kind of allow the development. And then this is just kind of a schematic of those, those right-of-ways with the acreage. But the first item is strictly for the abandonment of this 50-foot right-of-way in this, in this area right here. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? If not, this item requires a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. I do not have any speaker cards. Anyone like to speak to this matter? They're not being so public, excuse me.
Just one clarification.
Go ahead.
I understood that there was no cost to the city to acquire this property, so there's no cost, or lost cost, if you will, to give it back, correct?
Correct. Back in the day when developers would plat, they would, they weren't required to build the streets or put up monies for those streets before the plats were filed. And so, from time to time, there were alleyways and streets that were never built, but lots were dedicated and sold. And it's just an example of that, where it was never built, and it just makes sense to get that off of our books and let them have that to develop.
Good, I just think it's important to point that out, that it's not like we're giving up anything that's of value really to the city and certainly a better use of that land in this, in this case. So, thank you.
Okay, excuse me one second. We have a public hearing going on right now. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this matter?
I'm sorry, Jay.
That's not a problem. If not, the public hearing is closed now.
I have a question.
Did you have a question?
I wanted to clarify, I've seen it already for myself, but Harlem Street is not being abandoned. It's that other alley.
Correct.
Down the other way.
Yes.
Just for clarification.
It is not any street or alley that is currently constructed or in use. It is strictly right-of-ways that were never used.
Got it. Thank you.
Someone else on this side have any questions? Anybody else over here? Okay. Any other questions, Mrs. Shirley? If not, may I have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, then item F is to consider request to abandon a 15-foot wide alley. Go ahead, Mr. Shirley.
And this is just for one of the, one of the alleys in the area, the 15-foot alley, as I've stated. None of these were ever constructed or utilized. They're just raw land sitting there.
Okay, so same discussion, this item calls for a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to that matter? They're not being so public, hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. And then item G, consider request to abandon 15-foot wide alley.
This is the alley, same thing. It's the alley that runs north and south between Gates and Hudson.
Okay, so it's just different alley. Okay, public hearing is now open. Anyone like to speak to that matter? If not, the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion? Second in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Then item H is a, consider recommending the approval of a resolution supporting the City of Longview application for certified local government status. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you may remember, seems like two or three years ago, when we started down the path for historic preservation, one of the, one of the recommendations from that task force was to pursue the certified local government status. That's something that we've been working for, for a couple of years. We've drafted an ordinance, created a commission, amended the ordinance a couple of times to meet the criteria based on new CLG coordinators, and we're at the point where we're ready to submit the application, and we're, we're asking for y'all's blessing to do that, so that we can be recognized for our efforts in preservation and open the door for help from THC and also potential grant resources that would be available.
Okay, questions, Mrs. Shirley? Go ahead, Ms. Casher.
Clarify, just please, for the public, because I think this is a great step. THC, what the acronym stands for, and what is this going to actually do? What is this going to really provide for our community?
Sure. This is, THC is the Texas Historical Commission, and the Certified Local Government program is very similar to the Main Street program. It's just a broader base. It's community-based instead of specific area of town, and it does a lot of the same things. It opens the door for technical resources through the state. It opens the door for grant opportunities for different programs. It also opens the door for other organizations where, where there's funding sources available. If you're certified local government, then that gives you points for all of that. So this is something that will help not just the city, but the community.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, may I have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Shirley, good job tonight.
Thank you.
Action items. Are we ready, Ms. Mary Ann? Okay. Consider resolution authorizing and directing negotiation of a master development agreement with Longview Innkeeper One LLC. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. A little over a month ago, Kevin Hillchi presented to the City Council a preliminary design concept for a proposed hotel conference center. At that meeting, Council directed staff to go back, do our due diligence, and come up with a plan that would allow us to fund the operation and the construction of that conference center without raising taxpayer dollars. Since that meeting, I, along with help from Sean Hera, Kevin Cummings, Michael Shirley, Ingrid Self, and Mr. Willard, have met with various groups in the community, as well as Mr. Hillchi on more than one occasion, and we come to you tonight very comfortable that we can do exactly what it is that you asked. First of all, the Hotel Conference Center has been a goal of Longview residents for quite some time, dating back to the Vision 2010, Vision 2015, and the I-20 Corridor Task Force. These three groups have listed a Hotel Conference Center as a goal for Longview. With that in mind, the Chamber of Commerce and the City of Longview jointly in December 2012 put together a request for proposal for this Hotel Conference Center. At that RFP, we listed a minimum of 175-room hotel, full service, with a restaurant and a bar, and an adjacent conference center facility publicly owned and operated, with minimum banquet room seating of 1,000 people, breakout rooms, and outdoor patio area. The city received two responses to this RFP, and the Council elected to move forward with Longview Innkeeper LLC, Mr. Hillchi's group. This is the site location for that property. You can see it denoted in yellow. It is located along the I-20 corridor at the intersection of Estes Parkway and Eastman Road. We began Phase One, the pre-development phase, in April of this year. In that phase, the city spent $40,000 on a pre-development study. We also received an updated feasibility study that looked at this property and decided it was an actual property that was good to be used for a Hotel Conference Center. We also received a geotechnical soils report, which told us that the land would be good to build on, and we received preliminary design for that project. This phase ended with the presentation that Mr. Hillchi made on September the 12th. At that presentation, this is the design that he provided to you all. You can see the long, narrow property there is the hotel itself. That is the privately-owned hotel. You can tell the dotted line there that denotes sort of the line of demarcation between the privately-owned hotel and the publicly-owned conference center. So everything left of that line is, would be city-owned. We anticipate the cost for the construction of this conference center at $8.5 million. Five and a half to seven million of that would be for the actual construction of the conference center and outfitting the conference center with furniture, fixtures, and equipment. An additional $1.4 million would be needed to purchase the land that the conference center would sit on and to build a road coming off of Estes Parkway that would run the length of the property and would be the ingress and egress from Estes Parkway to the hotel property. Obviously, we believe that this property would bring us additional revenue, and that is how we anticipate funding the operation and construction of this project. The primary source of funding would be generated from the hotel property and conference center property itself, in the form of the full 9% hotel occupancy tax, the property tax from this hotel property, and the rental fees derived from the conference center bookings. A secondary source of funding, if need be, would be the 2% hotel occupancy tax monies that we are accumulating. If you'll remember, several years ago, the Texas Legislature enacted legislation for the City of Longview that allowed us to increase our hotel occupancy tax, that's the tax that's assessed to our travelers who stay in our hotels, from 7% to 9%, with the caveat that that additional 2% money would be spent on the design, the operation, or the construction of a proposed Hotel Conference Center or Convention Center. So we feel like this is an allowable revenue source for this project. We had some assumptions that we really took into account when we were building our numbers, and we wanted to make sure and communicate those to you all tonight. Assumption number one is that the project can be funded with a hotel occupancy tax revenue bond. That bond would be paid back from the revenue sources that I outlined in the slide prior. This bond would not touch our general fund, so it would not impact our taxpayers. The second assumption that we have is that the city would own the conference center and land associated with that conference center, as well, the private developer would own the hotel and the land associated with that hotel. And the last assumption that we are operating with is that the developer would build more than the originally presented 135 to 150 rooms. If you recall, at the September council meeting, the presentation that Mr. Hillchi made did list 135 to 150 rooms. Since that time, we've met with some community groups who really felt like we needed more rooms in and around that conference center property to bring in larger conferences. We've spoken with Mr. Hillchi, and he is agreeable to having more rooms in and around that property, whether it will be in the form of a larger connected hotel or a smaller connected hotel and an adjacent hotel somewhere near that property. We've not yet determined that would be locked down in the next phase, but I am comfortable saying he is agreeable to making more rooms available. What we are asking you all to do tonight is to move forward with the next phase. This is Phase Number Two. It is the master development agreement phase. It would cost the city $140,000 to go forward. We would pay for this out of the 2% hotel occupancy tax monies that we have. And what we would be able to do in Phase Two is secure options on the necessary land. We would be able to secure the option of the full-service hotel brand. We would be able to fully design the entrance road that we were talking about, and we would be able to draft the master development agreement and the management agreement. Drafting the master development agreement and the management agreement in this phase would allow us to come to terms on any piece of the puzzle that may make either side walk away from the table before we spend any more money. We estimate it will take us approximately three months to complete this phase, at which time we will come back to you all with the master development agreement and management agreement and ask you all to approve those. We are looking at the last meeting in January for that timeline. At that point, we would move forward into Phase Three, assuming that those were approved. That would be the final design phase. Once we made it past the final design phase, we would move into construction. I'm available to answer any questions you all may have, and Mr. Hillchi...
We have a whole list of questions, no, strictly for you, Mary Ann.[1576.41][1576.41](laughter)
Mr. Hillchi is in the audience and can answer questions.
That was all too nice and well, well rehearsed, but now comes the fun. You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Nah, just kidding. Ah, just a couple of comments. What is the current balance in that 2% hot money fund that would go, that would fund this $140,000?
Right now, we have approximately $700,000 in that fund.
Okay, so it's accumulated about $700,000 over the last several years. Okay.
Last year and a half. You all enacted it sometime after the legislature allowed us to do so. So it's only been building for a little over a year.
Okay. Second thing, I want to stand corrected that that legislation did not limit strictly to the maud cob or fairground facility as far as being able to use that hot money.
That is correct. It did not.
Okay, all right. I stand corrected. The next thing I wanted to ask is the number of people that actually, how many people received the RFP? I know we got, we received two quotes or bids, but how many were actually sent out?
We were told, and I wasn't involved in the process at that time, and I believe the chamber is the group that actually sent out the RFPs, but we were told by the chamber that it was sent to the local hoteliers in the area.
Okay, I just want to make clear that they were given the opportunity to participate in this process and chose not to.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, questions? You go last, 'cause you're gonna be...[1671.52][1671.52](laughter)
I don't have any questions.
No, go ahead, Sydney. I'm kidding.
Thank you, Mary Ann, for the presentation. Would you go back to one of your first slides where you showed the dotted line on what property would belong to the, yes, there. When you're coming south, you angled across there. You come directly, you look, yes, why do we angle across part of that purple area for property rights?
Come on up.
Can I answer that question for you? Sorry, Kevin Hillchi. That is the architect's rendition. He actually has it wrong. That line at the end of the entrance drive, the access drive at the bottom, nope, down there, is supposed to turn to the right, go to the building, and go straight up.
Okay. Okay.
And actually, the facility, if you notice right where the arrow point is there, the facility has drawdown doors at that location, so when the conference facility is not being used, they can be closed for security purposes. If, if there were ever to be a separation of the two, that would become an actual wall instead of a drawdown. So it's just a mistake in that particular drawing.
Okay, on your, on the, on the south wall there, you've got little door extrusions. In other words, what, when we actually get to a property map or deed, giving the Meeks and, or the, well, I'm not, when you get to the deed that, that gives an actual physical description, are we gonna be a square? Are we gonna have to take in all these little, these little abutments? Are we gonna be, where, give me an idea of what the actual...
Okay, can, can I control the mouse from here?
Yeah, what, what, what the actual property deed will show us on it, if you could just follow it.
Okay. That property line, instead of going in this direction, would move, I'm sorry, I'm not... I'm not-
How about I do it for you?
Okay, would move to the right here-
Okay.
And then straight up.
All right.
Okay, which is actually the physical boundaries inside the building which separate the-
Yes, all right.
Maybe I don't understand the question.
Then where would it go from there? Would go up to-
To the north.
To the north, and then, again, that hasn't been fully determined, but angled or separate out, needed parking for the hotel as opposed to needed parking for the conference facility.
Okay, would we have, now let's just understand-
I believe if you look at the rest of the design, it actually goes up to the entrance and separates the entrance in half, just like the back access.
That's my question. Right now, we have a good relationship, and we're moving forward with this. If you happen to sell the hotel to somebody else, and they got in an argument with the city, do we have a legal entry into this? Do we have a right-of-way on that property where somebody couldn't shut us out?
Yes, and that's why the drives are split, and that would be set up so that there would be shared access and easement.
Okay, there would be a legal easement entrance, so if somebody later on got mad at the city, they couldn't close the front gate, you'd say, y'all-
Only if you made them mad.
And likewise, if the city got mad at us, they couldn't, they couldn't close our entrance to the hotel.
Okay, all right, better to ask now than later.
Oh, I, okay, good deal. But, I, I think to clarify, there will be, there will be clear meets and bounds for the different properties.
Right.
Okay, anybody else? Rich?
I'd like to speak in support of this. I was on the mayor's 2015, and was actually in charge of the subcommittee. We toured all over the state trying to find a cookie, a design that we could use to take a hotel and put it at MODCOP. And it became clear from everybody we talked to that that just wasn't feasible, and hence we resulted in just doing a nice upgrade to MODCOP, which has been fabulous. But this design is exactly what we saw in the other cities, where they had successful public-private partnerships, and so I think this will be a great thing for our city, a great thing for the south side of town, and I give Mr. Hillchi, you and your group, a lot of credit, and I hope that you're gonna have the same kind of impact on that part of town as Cisco and Walmart, and you can see what's happened in that area. So I think this is great, and looking forward to what happens next.
Good deal, anybody else? Ms. Cashin?
I'm gonna kind of piggyback off of Alabama Councilman Richard Manley. Having served on 2010, 2015, and being the liaison to the I-20 Task Force, plus the Council Member for District Three, I have to say this is a great day. It's been a long time coming. I want to commend staff, Mary Ann, our City Manager, and you, Mr. Hillchi. I like the willingness to potentially bring in another hotelier as well, and I just want to speak to the community on a sidebar and just say, this is great for our tax base, and I'm just, I'm excited, and I think that there has been a lot of quality work put into this project, and I think this is a testament to what we can do as a community if we just all work together. So thank you very much, and thank you, Mayor, for supporting this project. I have to say that our mayor has, through the years, we've known each other before I became a council member, and he does work, you know, sometimes you have to work on him a little bit, but he does really share his concern with our entire community, and I'm grateful for this right now and what's taking place, because we will revitalize South Longview, and this is just part of the beginning. So thank you again. Thank you, Mayor.
Good deal. Okay, Gary?
Okay, Ms. Miller, I like that Phase One and Phase Two development you got so far, but in Phase Three, I'm not sure what's gonna actually happen, but this is my position and interest. I want to see either a corporate or individual naming sponsor for this new convention center.
We can name it right after years.
Gary's-
You know, such as-
All it takes is money.
Such as, you know, the Verizon Convention Center, or the Eastman Convention Center, or even the JD Convention Center here at Longview.
Don't throw that back over this way, man, that's your idea. Yeah.
And the reason I say that, Ms. Miller, is because I think that would be the first time the city costs if we had a, you know, naming sponsor for that particular convention center, because it's gonna be, how many square footage, Mr. Hillchi?
The convention facility will be 25,500 square feet-
25,000 square, that's-
In its current configuration.
That's pretty big.
Yeah, I would recommend to you, Gary, that as we, I mean, this is, this is continuing to be a process to move the process forward.
Right.
And those are all things that can be discussed and talked about and entertained, you know, as we get to that point. Right now, tonight, and I understand you want to put it out there publicly, but where we're at right now is to move the process into the next phase so that we can, you know, see exactly what the costs are, and all of those kind of details can be wrapped together. But this is a good point.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Ms. Frost.
I think, looking back, I came on the council in '05, and the mayor and the council started looking with these Vision 2010s and Vision 15. I think this is a result of future planning, which is a big thing that we need to be doing and continue to do. So we've been successful with involving people in the community through task force and committee. I think the mayor's done a great job in leadership in doing these things.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, again, Sidney- One more, one more. We're gonna start charging you by the minute.
All right.
Go ahead.
I think you've already gone over this. On the actual management of the conference center, who is gonna manage the conference center?
Time out.
The city or Mr. Hillchi?
Were you at the last meeting?
I'm just wondering, there's people on TV watching.
Well, the people on TV watching, were you here? We discussed that. Mr. Hillchi's company's gonna, gonna manage the center.
Okay, all right, that's true, I just wanted, yes.
Okay.
That's it. One more.
Okay, I have a motion to approve.
That was my motion.
Second, all favor say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much, Council. I think this is a good program for the city. It's been talked about, kicked around, moved around, put off.
Plans on the show.
Oh, my God. Yeah, I kind of talked to it like being the bride going down the aisle, and a husband-to-be never showed up. So we got it together this time, good job, guys. Okay, let's go to the next action item, that's a resolution making a chair designation appointments to the CPAC or the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. As Council knows, we received word from former mayor Earl Roberts that due to some personal issues, he would not be able to serve ASH Chair, but would like to continue to serve on the ASHal Committee. So tonight, what I'd like to do is recommend Keith Honey to be our chair. As you know, Keith has been instrumental in some of the Vision 2010s and different projects. He's been great to work with and to step forward, to do whatever it takes to make this a better community, so I'd like to ask for your support of that. Couple other things, we would like to replace Reverend Rockmore, that's asked to be removed for his own particular reasons from the task force. I'd like to recommend Reverend D.J. Nelson. He also has served on a number of committees, I think. He brings a great vision, he's a well-spoken man, and has done a very good job, so I'd like to ask your consideration. And then one other item we have to consider is, we have to have a representative from Planning and Zoning as part of the committee. Due to Kimberly Fish, his announcement to run for public office, she's unable to serve on Planning and Zoning. So I'd like to ask that our vice chair, who's here with us tonight, Mr. Lonnie Murphy, be appointed to the liaison for the Planning and Zoning Committee. Questions? If not, may I have a motion? May I have a motion, second, all favor say aye? All opposed, motion passes. Council, that's, that's it, items of community interest. You go first, Mr. Sidney. Oh, wait a minute, I'm gonna come to you. I finished yet.
Oh.
You defer to Mr. Gary.
Listen, I got an opportunity to go out to the Dillers, they had a grand opening for, I guess, a new cosmetic facial-
At Dillers?
Cosmetics.
Where at?
Kels, what's the name of Kels?
Kels.
Kels, we opened up a new Kels. They, out at Dillers, and they had their grand opening, and I went out there and read a proclamation in your name.
Good for you. Did you get, did you get a little facial?
Kels is androgynous.
I'm serious.
They said, they said they couldn't throw in a facial for-
They couldn't throw in a facial?
For, for City Council.
Oh, okay. I think you have someone in the audience tonight you ought to introduce.
Oh, oh, okay, my mom's out there, hi, Fay.
This is, okay, all right, Ms. Cashin?
Well, I mean, Kels is like major, I used to wear that when I was high-end. Okay, anyway.
When you-
High maintenance, no, whatever. Anyway, it's just, I don't know what I have to say, except, you know, now is just a good time in our community. And, you know, y'all are giving shout-outs, I see Mr. Lonnie Murphy walked in from District Three. Good to see you this evening, and thank you for agreeing to serve on the Comprehensive Plan Commission as well. Just want to encourage everybody to be safe during Halloween. I know people say that, you know, if you're a Christian, you may not necessarily do Halloween. I don't look at it that way, because I like to eat the candy, but-
I like to scare the kids.
I do, and I like to dress up, too, it's fun. But anyway, live a little, but be safe, and I want to encourage our children to really be safe, and don't be out there committing all these pranks, and causing us grief, and defacing our property, as has been done in the past, because we have to come back and pay for it. So enjoy your Halloween, and God bless everybody, and God bless Longview, Texas.
Good deal. I think Mr. Willard had a-
I just wanted to recognize Mr. Willie Marshall, he's not here, he was here earlier, I don't know if he had to leave, but anyway, Willie celebrated 25-year anniversary of employment with the City of Longview today, and we had a little party for him, and had some good cake over there.
Good deal.
Anyway, I wanted to congratulate Willie.
All right, Willie. Okay, Mr. Frost. Okay.
Got a couple of things, I'll make it quick. We don't have another meeting until after Marine Corps birthday, so I just wanted to give a shout-out, as I always like to do, to my fellow Marines. The Marine Corps was founded, Ton Tavern, a bar, fancy that, in 1775, so the Marine Corps is actually older than the country. So happy birthday, Marines, on November the 10th. The day before that, though, is the annual Alabama LSU Slug Fest in Tuscaloosa, so I'd like to ask the mayor to make a wager of five pounds of Dreamland BBQ from Alabama if we should lose against-
A turducken.
A turducken, in case we were able to-
And one of us has to bring it down that aisle, right?
Okay, works for me.
But I know I'm gonna have to start ordering my turducken pretty quick.
Well, I hope so.
I got baited this year pretty bad.
Well, truth be known, I had to pay up last time.
You did.
Yeah, we had the Dreamland BBQ.
Year before us, that is great.
I'd like to recognize a couple of members of our, of our community. Keith Honey's name's already been mentioned about the CPAC Committee, but he, I think everybody in this community knows what he has given to our community, and continues to, time and time again. For that, I'm sure, is why he was just recently appointed by the governor to the State Board of Regents for the TSTC, Texas State Technical College. So kudos to Mr. Honey, and thank you again for your continued service to our community, and I look forward to working with you on the CPAC. Secondly, I had the pleasure to meet the new CEO of Good Shepherd yesterday, Steve Altmiller. Mr. Altmiller has taken the time to invest a lot of time over the last several weeks, several weeks, to meet with a lot of folks in our community. I think he's met with most of the people here, if not all the council members, and I'm very impressed with him, and one of the things I liked, that I heard from him when I asked him, what do you think so far, was that how impressed he was with our community, how cohesive we were, how the city and the county and the citizens of the community are really trying to work together to make this place a better place. And so I'd like to say to him, good luck to Good Shepherd and to him, and it was a real pleasure meeting him, and I look forward to working with him. And I'd like to close by saying I have a town hall meeting on November the 5th, please come out. The mayor and I look forward to hosting you at Fellowship Baptist Church that night at 6:00 o'clock. Thank you.
Okay, 6:00?
Yeah, we moved it up maybe to 6:00.
Okay, good deal. Mr. Allen?
Sorry to interrupt your time. I just want to say thank you for the wonderful weather, and I'll tell you, in the fall of the year, there's no better place than Longview, Texas. We all should be very thankful for where we live.
There you go. Okay, recognition National Fire Prevention Month, City of Longview Fire Department in conjunction with First Baptist Church ROC is sponsoring a block party youth and family extravaganza. The event will be held Saturday, October 26, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the neighborhoods surrounding the central fire station. More information, please contact Fire Education Specialist Ayesha Robinson, 903-237-1119. The Animal Shelter Public Input Meeting will be held at City Hall on Tuesday, October 29, at 5:30 p.m. The purpose of the meeting is to present preliminary design concepts by architect, kindly architects and consultants, and to garner some feedback from the community. For more information, please contact the Development Services Department at 903-237-1060. So the purpose of this is really to get input, it's only a concept right now, and it's to let the public look at it and give us input, so please try to come out. Saturday, November 9, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, the City of Longview and Keep Longview Beautiful will host Longview Recycles Day in the Fall Trash Bash. Is that right, Ms. Droge? All right. The event will take place at the parking lot of the Longview Mall, 350 McCann Road. Residents may recycle electronics, including TVs, glass, motor oil, all plastics, all paper and cardboard, and all metals. Volunteers will meet at 8:00 a.m. to help pick up litter from the neighborhoods, streets, and parks. More information, visit longviewtexas.gov or keeplongviewbeautiful.org. That's all that we have tonight, and now, City Council will convene an executive session for deliberations regarding real property under Texas Government Code Section 551072, which is to deliberate the purchase and value of real property interest for rights-of-way improvements in furtherance of the FM 2275 George Ritchie Extension and Magnolia Lane widening projects located in the City of Longview, Greck County, Texas, which acquisition is for a public purpose. Will we reconvene? We will not reconvene. Thank you, the meeting is moved to executive session.